The door is the open meetings publication of the Act that way. And if you would, at this time, please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Beth, would you please call roll?
Yes. Grandquist?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
Muran?
Here.
Moaning?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
File?
Here.
Next item on the agenda then is approval of the consent agenda. So moved, Your Honor?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Would you please vote?
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Next item then is the regular agenda. So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the regular agenda. Would you please vote?
All council members voting in the affirmative.
That takes us down then to special proclamations. And the first proclamation that we have this evening is a proclamation for November 1st, 2015, as Extra Mile Day. Whereas the city of Norfolk, Nebraska is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service end. Whereas the city of Norfolk is a community that encourages citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, families, friends, and community. And whereas the city of Norfolk is a community that chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within the community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas the city of Norfolk acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America Foundation to create 200 extra mile cities and states in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2015. Now there, be it resolved that I, Jim Langy, Council President of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2015, as Extra Mile Day in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, and urge each individual in our community to take time on this day to go the extra mile in his or her own life and to also acknowledge all those around who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Is there anyone in the audience to receive this? Okay. The next proclamation that we have is for October 2015 as International Alpha Delta Kappa. And it reads as follows: This is proclamation for International Alpha Delta Kappa Month. Whereas women in education constitute a great portion of the nation's working force and are constantly striving to serve their communities and nation in educational, cultural, and charitable programs, leading to harmony, happiness, and peace among all people. And whereas major goals of Alpha Delta Kappa International Honorary Organization for Women Educators are to give recognition to outstanding educators, to build a fraternal fellowship among educators adding to their effectiveness in promoting excellence in education, and to establish high standards in education, and to promote educational charitable projects and activities enriching the lives of individuals everywhere and assisting these individuals into happy, constructive, and fulfilling lives. Now therefore, I, Jim Langy, Council President of the City of Norfolk, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2015 as International Alpha Delta Kappa Month. Is there anyone in the audience to receive this? No? And then the third item that we have is the City of Norfolk Tree Greenleaf Award. And tonight, we'd like to recognize an organization and a couple of residents who have gone above and beyond what may have done, what may have done when it comes to landscaping. Could we have members of the Tree Advisory Board come to the front? You're alone, Doc. Carrying a heavy load. Each year, the City of Norfolk Tree Advisory Board presents the Greenleaf Award to a business or organization that has outstanding landscape in the city. This year, we're giving an award to a business and also a Greenleaf Award for outstanding landscaping to a resident. Bob and Nancy both of 2907 Pinnacle Drive are the recipients of this first Greenleaf Award for residents.
Are you presenting it or are they presenting it?
They're presenting it.
Bob?
The Bowles were nominated for the award because of their use of trees, flowers, and potted plants in making their landscape particularly beautiful. Congratulations, Bob and Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This year's Greenleaf Award for a business or organization goes to Northeast Community College. The college has made beautiful landscaping a top priority for the students, staff, and guests who walk the campus each day. We congratulate groundskeepers Sean Sayers and his crew for receiving the 2015 Greenleaf Award for Business and Organizations. Could you come up here, Dr. Chips, and could come up also with your staff to accept this reward, our award?
Sean, this is good.
This is great. It sure is.
Good job out there. Good job.
You allow us to make a few comments, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. This is part of the wonderful staff that makes that happen, number one. One thing we want to do, and I'm Mike Chips, President of Northeast Community College, and we just want to, first of all, thank you for this award. It's, it really makes a statement about the community at large, though, to be frank with you. Northeast Community College is a work, a collective work of all of us together. The representatives here tonight are really the, the working hands that make it look beautiful. One thing about that is that I hear from thousands of guests and students is that some of the decisions, for instance, that students make are on behalf of the way the campus looks. Now, wish, we, we always wish it's just totally about academics, mind you, which is an important part of their decision. But there's nothing like curbside. Anybody that's in real estate fully understands that curbside does make a difference. And when you drive past Northeast Community College, it's one of the prettiest campuses in the state of Nebraska and beyond. But there's nothing like these folks behind me being recognized for the work that they do each and every day, and I want to thank them personally. And we want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to be recognized on behalf of the college and the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up here. You can't stand there. Come on up here. Come on. Sorry. Now, you're going to stand right here. I want Doc here to hold on to this. Come on. We need to balance out a little bit, everybody. Come on over here.
Bike. You must bike.
You got to stand in here too. These are our infamous leaders that were, were quiet about coming up here. So now, you think you can get us in here, Jim? Yeah, I know.
Smile, Brandon.
Everybody good? Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
And just to note, if you haven't witnessed these personally, it's still a great time of year to be able to drive by the residence there on Pinnacle Drive and to take a walk through the college campus. It's both are first-class acts that way. Okay, that then brings us into the area of public hearings this evening. And our first public hearing regards a revised application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for Community Development block grant funds in the amount of $413,891 for grant number 15CR007 to reconstruct water main on Madison Avenue. And at this time, I would like to turn the podium over to Mr. Tom Higginbotham.
Need to shorten my name. It's good to see you, Thad. Uh, yes, we're here to talk about the, the public hearing. Basically, the state of Nebraska has some extra money. There's eight communities in the state of Nebraska that qualify for Community Revitalization Program Funds, or CR for short. Some of those communities have dropped out over the years. They're, they're just running out of projects to do. And then there's always a little extra money where Norfolk has participated in what they call the supplemental funding to get a little extra. And some of those communities have dropped out of those funds too, just for, they don't have a lack of projects right now. So basically, what that means is they had extra money sitting around, about $263,891, to be exact. Uh, the only stipulation was that if Norfolk and the other communities that are interested in this excess funds, if they wanted to apply for it, the only caveat was that it has to be used for housing. So with that said, we met with the city staff and decided on what would be the best use of these funds and how we can quickly get them spent. Uh, so we're going to do some single-family rental rehabilitation, some owner-occupied rehabilitation for owner-occupied. And also, due to there being housing activities, a little bit of the administration went up from the last time. The city staff, housing staff, will have to do income qualify the homeowners and, and monitor the project. So it's just going to be a little extra cost in there to do those things. With this, also, I think, coming back next month, as you all know, that you utilize the Housing Agency Board as your housing board to approve applicants and those kind of things. So we'll be bringing back some housing guidelines for you to adopt or change next month. We're going to raise the limit on the owner-occupied rehab from $20,000 to $25,000, which would be kind of standard, because we have $100,000 in the budget. So that'd do four homes at 25 maximum, if they need it or don't need it. Uh, we try to stick around that $25,000 per unit, just because once we get above that, if we're getting into lead work, then we're getting into abatement, which really increases the cost. So we kind of try to stick below that with the abatement rules and regulations. So, um, we're, obviously, these are federal funds, so we're here to have a required public hearing. And so if there's any questions about these funds, I can answer those. I just appreciate working with the city staff and their hard work in putting these dollars to use. We've been doing this since 2005, and I think Norfolk should be commended, really, you know, on, especially the staff. They sit around. The engineering department on the roads and streets and sidewalks. And so we're really putting this money to use and making some really good improvements in Norfolk, so.
Questions for Tom? Not the guests, Tom. Thanks for all your efforts, all the time. Move us then to the next item, which is a public hearing at the request of Mark Winklebauer, Lucas M. Winklebauer, Sarah M. Sindalar, Paula Freidenberg, Jill Winklebauer, for zoning change from R1, single-family residential, to I2, heavy industrial, located at the southeast corner of First Street and Eisenhower Avenue. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there's, sir, if you'd sign in, state your name for the audience and...
Well, good evening. My name is Todd Lorenz, and I'm here on behalf of Winklebauer Farms this evening. Before you, the application before you tonight is a change of zone request from R1 to I1 is what we're requesting. Uh, we were before our Planning Commission on October 6th and received a 9-0 vote of approval, recommendation for the council. So we appreciate that, and tonight, we're here to, to introduce this to you as well. So the property that we're referring to is actually, I'm trying to see, but this is Eisenhower Avenue up here, First Street over here. You can see on the plan, future land use map, that it's identified for industrial here in the pink shading. So we feel like we're consistent with the future land use map. Uh, the reason we like this property as well is that it's adjacent to the rail line, Nebraska Central Rail Line. So we also feel it's appropriate for industrial use. Uh, the land across the railroad to the east is already zoned industrial and, and used as industrial. So we, we feel this fits in well with the, the land around us here. You know, beyond that, I guess I don't have much to add. I'd be happy to answer your questions, if there are any. Otherwise, we would just ask for your support of this item.
Can you say what the plans are to put on this corner?
Sure. I'd be happy to. If this is approved and if our conditional use permit is approved through Planning Commission tomorrow morning, this property will be used for an agronomy facility. Helena Chemical Company is looking at the property. So that would be the, the plan to use.
Would that be a, a storage facility, or a manufacturing facility, or a compounding facility?
Storage, storage and retail. Yep.
Thank you.
No questions?
The Planning Commission vote on this was what?
9-0, recommended approval. And there was some discussion, our original application was to change to I2. That's kind of what we talked about with staff several months ago at our pre-application meeting. At Planning Commission, they, they suggest we go from I2 to I1. So the change request is R1 to I1. We have no objection to that. We're, we're okay with that. So if that's your, your wishes and desires, we're certainly okay with that.
The, that designation is a little less intense that way, so...
That's correct. Yep.
May I, Jim?
Yes.
One of the things that happened, since the application was for, to I2, the ordinance that's on your agenda would be compatible with that and would move it to I2. So in order to accomplish what you're agreeable to and, and what the Planning Commission, I guess you haven't had the, the recommendation yet, but when you read it, what will be necessary is for the council to have an amendment to amend the ordinance that will be brought forward to the, to, to the I, to the I1, if that's what you want to do, then approve that amendment and then approve, then deal with the ordinance that you've amended in that manner, if that makes any sense.
Can you say whether there might be plans for manufacture at this location in the future? Or is this, is the plan for this to be strictly a storage?
Strictly storage and retail. Correct. No manufacturing.
Any other questions? Thank you. Because this is a public hearing, I ask if there's anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition, or who has merely questions regarding this proposed change. Valerie, do you have anything you want to add to that? Put you on the spot.
Based on the Planning Commission, like they said, they recommended going from I2 to I1 from the pre-planning to the Planning Commission. And the reason of that is because there is some R1 close by. However, it is an appropriate industrial corridor there with I1, 2, and 3 in the vicinity. But they can perform all their uses in an I1 zoning district, and they don't need to go to an I2.
Thank you.
Are, are there some buffering requirements, given proximity to residential?
Yes, there will be a buffer. I believe I1 is a 40-foot buffer zone to an R1.
Again, I ask, there's anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak to this before I close the public hearing? Not then, at this time, I would like to close this public hearing and ask for a Planning Commission report?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 6th, 2015, at the request of the Winklebowers, to consider a zone change from R1, single-family, to I2, heavy industrial at the corner, southeast corner of First Street and Eisenhower Avenue. After review of the application, the Planning Commission advises a zone change to the less intense district of I1, light industrial, because the location is near the college and other single-family residential zoning. The proposed use for the land is to allow, is allowed both in I1 and I2 districts. Helena Chemical will operate an agronomy, retail fertilizer business at this location under a conditional use permit. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the zone change from R1 to I1 on a 9 to 0 vote.
Thank you. That moves us then to consideration of ordinance number 5370. I have somebody that would introduce that.
Mr. President, do we need to submit language to change that to I1 prior to?
Introduce it first.
We need to introduce it first.
I'll offer ordinance number 5370 for consideration.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we consider ordinance 5370. Been advised then that following the recommendations to, to change that to I1, we would need to consider amendment to that.
And I'll offer that amendment from I2 to I1. Change in language?
Second.
Okay. Would you please vote?
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion to amend ordinance 5370 carries.
Okay, now we're dealing with ordinance 5370 with the amendment changing it to I, I1 in lieu of I2. Any discussion? Not then, would you?
I guess you just clarify the reasoning behind the going I1 from I2. What, what restrictions, how the restrictions are replacing? You know, you talked about protecting some of the R1 residents out there. Maybe we could clarify that, that way they've got that in their, the paper tomorrow?
Of why we went from I2 to I1. It's a, just a less intensive use and planning, if you can step your intensities down so that you don't have a really heavy, intense use, down to a less intensive use. So it's kind of an in-between that still allows them to have their uses.
When you say less intense, I guess that's the gray area I'm getting at.
Well, like an I-
You mean like a-
Like an I3 is a very intensive use. An I2 is less intensive, and then an I3, I1 is the least intensive of the industrials.
Is this intensive like traffic-wise or machinery-wise or?
Traffic, manufacturing, odor, dirt, you know, those sorts of things. So that usually, you find those in the more intensive uses.
So I1 will be the least amount of intensity?
Right, versus in, like, an I3 or an I2 that they were actually requesting. And I1 is less intensive.
Least impactful to the surrounding environment.
Would you like to know, would you like to know the uses?
Well, I'm just like, I'm looking for example. That's what I'm, so it looks, so it makes, we're saying intensity up here, I'm just like, what? I'm more intense than he is. I don't know. We'd put you, you know, like an I3 would be like a new core.
I'm an I1, you're an I3.
He's probably an I2. Does that do it? There we go. There's, we can list the list, we can list the uses, if it would be helpful to the council.
I think a few.
I think, well, how we got to I2 is, if you looked at the matrix, we thought fertilizer required an I2 zoning. There was a conflict in the matrix. It actually was allowed in I1. So we recommended that they go with the least intensive that was necessary. And I think we changed the matrix at the last city council meeting.
Rendering would be an example off the top of my head.
We're, we're prospectively going to adjust it.
Would be an I3. That's a good example of lower.
So he would be rendering and I would not?
That's right. That'd be, oh, that's over there.
Valerie, across the railroad track, is, so that's zoned I1 or 2 or?
Across the railroad track, Ashley is on I3 already.
Okay. Which, I guess that creates that stepping stone, that buffering stepping stone there anyway, so...
It would be I3, and then west would be I1, and then west of that would be R1.
Okay.
And the Conferensive Plan calls for this area to be I1. Is that right?
Industrial.
It doesn't, it doesn't cost-
Doesn't necessarily go into that. Right.
Any other questions or discussion? Not then, would you please vote?
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5370 as amended carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5370 on second and third with the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that approve this on second and third. Any further discussion? If not, would you please vote?
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5370 as amended carries on second and third.
That then brings us into the regular agenda area. And consideration of ordinance number 5366, amending the present Conferensive Plan in the 300 to 400 block of South 25th Street for an open space in single-family residential to multifamily residential. Uh, this ordinance passed on first reading at the September 21st, 2015 city council meeting. And, um, do we open it first and then table it? Okay, at the request of the owner, they've asked that, we asked that you table a reading on ordinance number 5365. Excuse me, 5366, 5367, and 5368. And so I would entertain a motion of tabling action on ordinance number 5366 at this time.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we table action on ordinance number 5366. Would you please vote?
All councilmen voting in the affirmative.
The same is true with consideration of ordinance number 5367, again, at the request of the owner. They're requesting tabling action on this ordinance, so could I have a motion for table?
I make the motion? Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we table action on ordinance number 5367. Would you please vote?
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Then, consideration of ordinance number 5368, again, as noted, the owner has requested tabling action on that, so I would entertain such a motion.
I'll make the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, moved and seconded that we table action on ordinance number 5368. Would you please vote?
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinances 5366, 67, and 68 are tabled.
Okay, that brings us in to the September sales tax report, and I believe Sheila is gracing our presence.
Yes, the September sales tax receipts are $906,133.86. Receipts for the one and a half cent sales tax are down $95,810.28, or 12.36% from last September. Last September, we saw a spike in the sales tax due to the hailstorm. So considering that, when we were preparing the 1516 budget, we estimated that there would be a large decrease in September sales tax. Actual receipts came in $31,233, or 3.57% over our estimated. September receipts from the half-cent sales tax for the library are $226,533.47. Year-to-date sales tax receipts for the library are $871,096. Sales tax receipts for the one and a half cent sales tax for the fiscal year October 1, 2014 to September 30, 2015 are $8,211,716. This is up $368,712, or 4.7% from the prior fiscal year. The one and a half cent sales tax for the fiscal year exceeded budget by $530,261.
Thank you. Any questions for Sheila?
One question, because the sales tax is broken out on automobile sales, I believe. Is that correct? Does that show on a real drastic reduction as...
Yes, September did. It was, I think, about $60,000 less than the prior years.
Thank you. Okay, then the next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of resolution 2015-33, adopting the 2016, 20, through 2025 capital improvement program. Need a motion on that?
I'll make the motion? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I think, Lyle, you were going to present this or talk, discuss this anyway?
Good evening. Yes, I am. So I'm working my way through the first CIP process. Learning as we go, so I apologize if this is a little bit late. It'll be more prompt next year. As we look down, feel free to ask any questions as we, as we go through this, but on page, page number one, one of the first things you'll see there, the vehicle storage building, it's been in the works for a little while, the construction has actually started on it. They're digging down there. The bids initially during the construction, during the development phase was somewhere in the range of $750,000 to potentially $900,000. The actual bids that came in were considerably lower, and they ranged from the high end of $794,000 to $595,000 with a local builder and a local building system. As we go down the list, you see the asphalt distributor and straight spray patch. That has recently been added. It's, it's a pothole repair system that Jim Dooley has been looking into, something that one or two people can go through and repair potholes in the city more efficiently, more safely than is currently being done right now. Further down the list, onto page two, one of the exciting things for us is the, the library addition. You'll notice that it's scattered out over the course of three years, the cost, hopefully to match the incoming funds to pay for the building as, as time goes by. Further down there, we'll see, under fire, one of their substantial purchases for this coming up year is self-contained breathing apparatuses, that they're in the process of building the spec full right now, and those, that's the, the air packs that the firefighters wear on their back. Would expect to have their, their specs to our office pretty soon, within, within a couple of weeks. Any questions thus far? Otherwise, we can go to page three.
Okay, questions? Continue.
On Jim Dooley's request, when we look at that budget time, was, was that considered in level four, do you recall?
No, I don't recall.
Yes, it was, but it was, ended up being funded. It was a level four item that was funded.
In the middle of the third page there, you'll notice some radios, actually, a lot of divisions, you'll notice radios. Part of the technology of this, of the radios that the city uses is, is called an EDAC system, and it stands for Enhanced Digital Access Communication System. Even though it says digital in it, it's actually an analog system that is going to be becoming obsolete in the near future. It's been in place for a long time. So we're, we're looking at having the divisions, considering what they're going to need for radio replacements to, to go with the new radios. Along with that will be the radio tower that's going to be hopefully across from the water tower, and the site development there. That's listed under the enterprise fund. Any questions about that? If not, we can scroll down further to another, to the fourth page. Starting soon, in January, February timeframe, the, the city is going to be hauling all of our solid waste from the city to the landfill in Clarkson, and we're ramping up to do that. We have two semi-tractors that have been ordered. Actually, they're, they're here in the community. We'll be working on getting an additional trailer. There will be, after much deep thought and evaluation, we're going to hire one additional staff around the February, January timeframe, so that they can be available and online in, in February. And we're gonna, because currently, right now, it's contracted, and through Rob Mercer and Dennis's work, it appears that we can be saving some money by doing it ourselves. And that is about all that I have to say, unless you have further questions about it.
Just, Lyle, one question, and I may have stepped over it in there, because we were talking about the radios and the tower and that going on up. Is there an item in there for the repli, I know we talked about taking down the existing water tower. Is there an item in here for that, or is...
Well, hopefully, I don't know if that's, is that part of this number? I don't think it's part of the calculation yet.
There are funds that are budgeted in the water division to build a tower, to replace the water tower. They were in last fiscal year.
Right.
So they were carried over in the budget process. Therefore, they're not showing up in the capital improvement program. It was a rebudgeting of funds that were already in the budget.
Okay, I guess my question ultimately in the end is, the water tower going to disappear?
Yes, the water tower will disappear.
Okay. Because it's looking kind of shabby.
Yes, the timeframe on it was, we're shooting for September, October, 2017. But that, the primary purpose of the water tower right now, although it does have the capability of holding water, is housing the tower, the housing, the antennas up there. So we don't want to take anything down until the new tower is in place and everything is fully functioning and in position and capable of taking over. At that point, when everything is ready to go, then, then we'll look at eating that part of the elephant.
Just, just to be clear, it's not a replacement of the water tower, it's a replacement of the communications tower, the water, as Lyle said, was we're actually replacing a communications tower. We won't have another water tower.
Correct.
Just, just to be clear for the community.
Another question. For a long time, money related to a master landscape plan that was approved by city council in 2009 was included in the CIP. I don't see it here. What's the status?
If you look on the very, on page one, the very bottom line...
Oh, okay, I missed it.
I did too, so don't feel bad. And it's 1.6 million scattered out over nine years or so, it looks like?
With the, with the first allotment of money in this fiscal year, correct?
1516. 1516.
Yeah.
And based off of the information they had at the time of the compilation of this, this is what we came up with.
And those dollars are going to be used for beautification of Norfolk Avenue from First Street to Cottonwood when we redo the bridge.
Extension, yeah, the bridge.
Any other questions or comments, or...
I guess the only other comment I would have was, talk about this patch machine, this patch truck. I've done a little bit of studying on that in the last couple of months. Just wanted to really make sure that we do our homework. I'm by no means any smarter than Mr. Dooley on how he does his job, but individuals I've talked to that have them, some have gone the cheap route, some have gone the expensive route on the mechanics of it, they've had to modify things over the time, and they said one of the biggest things is, is they work good, they're effective, but one of the biggest things they find is the people get bored to run them. So their comment to me was, make sure you train at least five or six individuals to operate that piece of machinery, or you'll see the work not being done right. And they all said get a serious satellite radio plan. That was weird, it was, I was trying to ask all these questions about, you know, how barrels stayed intact with the gravel going through them, the maintenance, and how long they'd last, and everyone said it's train people to operate it, because we get people that quit, because they get tired of driving the truck. That's all they do. And they said, you gotta have a radio.
That's fair advice, it'd be similar to our street sweeper, you know, you know, try to rotate that, and that's fair advice, we'll take that unconsidered.
I was waiting to hear corrosion of the cab and corrosion of the box and all those other things, and that's what I heard from five different companies. So that was interesting. So I just wanted to share that with you, and you can share that with Jim.
I'm sure there's some truth to that, appreciate that.
Yeah, appreciated, it's noted, and I'll let Jim know. I know he's, he has looked into these quite a bit, but I will definitely relay the message.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other questions, I would call for the vote.
Resolution 201533 is adopted.
That brings us to the end of the agenda. I thank you for putting up with me this evening, and the next time, we'll have a much lovelier personnel for running this meeting, so would entertain a motion of adjournment.
I make the motion.
We are adjourned.